All right, thank you folks. If I can get everyone to please stand, join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country, and then remain standing for our prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me in prayer? Our heavenly Father, we do thank you for our country. We thank you for all of those that made the sacrifices for our freedom. We thank you for our town, Father. We thank you for the town that we get to live in and enjoy, and we just want to thank you for all the people that have made it what it is. We thank you for this council, Father, and for their dedication and abilities to guide and direct this community. We just ask that you be with the meeting tonight, that you guide and direct them, give them wisdom that only comes from above, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Now, just before we begin, this is Pastor Appreciation Month, so I want to thank you all for coming and supporting Pastor Don. All right, the Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting is called to order. Community announcements and recognitions. I believe we have Lucy Swanson here with the quarterly report from the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Yes, you do. It is I. The third quarter of the year of 2013 for the Convention and Visitors Bureau of Guthrie. Dear Mr. Spradlin, as per the contract agreement between the Guthrie Chamber of Commerce and the City of Guthrie, I'm enclosing financial records and a summary from the third quarter of 2013. The third quarter was, as expected, fairly filled up with preparations for the Gentleman of the Road Tour, but that was by all means, by no means, all that was going on with the Guthrie CBB. Other great events were taking place, and opportunities for promoting Guthrie presented themselves frequently. We also began the process of creating an arts community here in Guthrie, which will serve to attract visitors year-round. In July, we had a visit from our GOTR liaison, Josh Albrecht, and one of the chamber's biggest fundraisers. The First Capital Triathlon brought new people to town. Josh was the Main Street Director in Dixon, Illinois, which was one of the most successful stopovers last year, and was hired by the production company to help them with their stopovers this year. Josh came to fill all of us in on what to expect from the festival and to let us know how things were shaping up. He was able to speak from his own and his town's own experience. He let us know that everything was on track and that Guthrie was going to have an awesome cumulative experience. The month was also filled with interviews and requests for information about the stopover. And if the stopover preparations weren't enough to keep us busy, we were also preparing for our second annual First Capital Triathlon. Even though this event is a Chamber of Commerce event, the CBB benefits from the exposure to hundreds of athletes in the region. This year, over 200 athletes participated and came from as far away as Dallas and Wichita. Speaking of things from far away, the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department set out 508 destination guides to 39 states and Puerto Rico. We appreciate our partners with the state tourism department. In August, we were very busy with events, roadshows, networking to mine information about how to go about creating an arts community, and of course, preparing for the Gentleman of the Road stopover. On August 1st, there was a roadshow at Ditchwich where information was disseminated to around 500 people. On the 2nd, Prairie Gothic had their second Make Guthrie Weird Party. Several hundred people attended the event and free concert. Guthrie Chamber of Commerce and CBB has offered to help Prairie Gothic in any way possible, including to help find sponsors for the events, which bring in visitors from Oklahoma City, Tulsa, and Edmond, to name a few. Other retailers have voiced their interest in doing a similar event in their own blocks, and we have said that we would be glad to work with them all. Guthrie block parties seems to have been born. On the morning of the 13th, O'Neill's Second Tuesday Coffee took place at Hoboken Coffee Roasters. O'Neill is Oklahoma new and emerging arts leaders and is a program of the Oklahoma Arts Council, whose mission is to support and mentor future arts leaders in Oklahoma. Meeting with them provided a chance to share our vision of how the arts can benefit Guthrie and to learn about how others have done the same thing. To close the month, Mary took a trip to Dallas to attend the Visions Women's Expo. She was able to share with a huge group of women about just how wonderful Guthrie is. Of course, many of them might have already contacted the OTRD for this information about us, since they had 455 requests from 43 states this month. September was a huge month for us. The GOTR stopover was a most exciting and incredible experience. We had about 40,000 ticketed visitors and over 3,000 downtown visitors. Despite the heat, the festivities were a huge success. The parking lot was deemed the Dust Bowl. After learning that the production company had not contracted with First Capital Trolley to shuttle people from the flats to downtown during the day, Mary decided that the CBB should provide that service so that more of the concert goers could get to our unique downtown. Many more visitors came to the mini Guthrie escape that was going on on east Oklahoma. When the big event was over, the glow lingered on, but there were more exciting things on the way. The Guthrie-Edmond Regional Airport had its annual fly-in, and Antique Vintage Market and the 27th Annual Guthrie Roadshow took place on the weekend of the 21st. They brought in a huge number of visitors and provided even more excitement to attract others in the future. The third quarter of 2013 was exhausting and exhilarating. We all experienced a new revelation, that Guthrie is stepping into her own, that she is able to stand on her own among any big city in the region, that she has her own unique set of qualities found nowhere else in the world, that the world is looking at us and waiting to see us blossom into one of the hippest, coolest places in the state to be. She's no longer depending solely on the past to attract suitors. She's looking forward to a beautiful future based on the foundation of what has come before. The Guthrie CBB would like to challenge you to come with her. Don't sit on the "that's the way it's always been done" past. Take a leap into what is developing for her future. Embrace what is possible in Guthrie. Guthrie Convention and Visitors Bureau, DMO, is ready and eager to facilitate all of the good things to come. Sincerely, Mary Coffin.
Thank you, Lucy Swanson, Convention and Visitors Bureau. All right, item three, consent agenda. We have item A. Counsel, I need a motion and a second for a vote, please.
So moved. Second.
Counsel, cast your votes, please.
Did you ever hold the votes, right?
Show us the votes, please. Vote is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Item number four, Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting is adjourned. The city council meeting is called to order. Consent agenda items A through F. Counsel, I need a motion and a second for a vote, please.
So moved. Second.
Counsel, cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes, right?
Show us the votes, please. And it is unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Item number three, discussion and possible action on presentation provided by the University of Oklahoma as soon as they finish with their next part of the procedure or their briefing.
Well, first off, Mayor, we appreciate the fact that you've generated unanimity within the group before we even got up here. And, you know, you can flash the lights anytime you'd like. My name is Tom Woodfin. I'm fortunate to be one of the faculty members that's been working with this group of students. Before we get to the fifth and final part of this, some of you have been here, some of you just come in, I want to go back over briefly the four parts we just did. So, the lessons learned. We decided to start the presentation with the end of the presentation, which is, what did we learn? One of the things that was very evident from the interviews of the stakeholders is that Guthrie is resilient, has a resilient group of volunteers and leadership, such that with council members, your lovely city manager, the Chamber of Commerce, all of those players were able to pull it together. Getting a Gentleman of the Road concert together, working with the folks from out of town that are coming in with all of their logistical expertise is not a simple thing. You should congratulate yourselves. Now, there were some people who felt left out, but mostly those were people who didn't figure out what was coming down the track, okay? Once they figured it out, almost everybody got on board. If you're going to continue to do this and remake yourselves or continue to make yourselves a regional music destination, you've got all the pieces in place, and you've got all the players in place. It's not like you're limping along. You've already got it here. You simply have to work together strongly enough to make that happen. What the audience thought. So, we have this survey of 546 people who experienced Guthrie, and that's a real goldmine. And Professor Wood here can help in terms of interpreting what all that means, but what came out of that was that you could actually, in that demographic of 18 to 34-year-olds that go to two to six concerts a year, and you've got 88% of them that came within 300 miles, that's a goldmine. Those are folks you want to bring back, and you have the physical infrastructure that's attractive enough to bring them back. There are lots of cities that are trying to remake themselves as walkable communities, and you've already got it. Weather and environmental barriers, this is Oklahoma, there are no weather and environmental barriers. All you have to do is provide shady places where people can drink beer and be entertained with street festivals, and they've already said they'll come back. 96% of them said they would come back. So, one of the suggestions of a design intervention was the temporary programming of parklets. Oklahoma City is doing that on a regular basis, the Better Block Project, and also Parking Day. People like doing it. One of the advantages of a parklet is that they're surprising. So, if someone comes to Guthrie every couple of months to eat or to hear music, if they come and there's something different on the street, that's entertaining. That's like, oh, I didn't expect that. People are delighted. People like to be delighted when they come visit places. We all know that. And then the last part, the fifth one, that the group is getting ready to present, is about prescribing a permanent place. I'll hand that over to this group.
All right, well, the last group, and my name is Peng Cai. My major is urban planning.
My name is Kun Ting Kong, landscape architecture.
My name is Zhang Li, landscape architecture.
I'm Abby Liu, landscape architecture. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Our project is about the Harrison Square. As well known, every year from April to December, the City of Guthrie hosts many events in the downtown area. So, it's necessary for the City of Guthrie to make full advantages of the limited existing public spaces to provide service for the visitors and the local residents. The project site is owned by the city, and the area is not big, just half an acre. The sole present utilization is parking. The project site is next to the Harrison Avenue and the First Street. In the north, there is the commercial area, and in the south, there is the residential area. So, we think the project site has a pretty good location with enormous service potential. There are 52 parking lots in the site and another 154 parking lots near the site, but according to our investigation, the utilization rate of all of the parking lots is low. So, we think if we occupy the site to make some changes to increase the utilization rate, to explore the service potential, there is no parking issue. Our objective is meaning to build a structure with the function of the farmer market and stage.
Okay. Before designing, we use a case study to discuss the great opportunities and challenges. We're trying to use some great best examples to see how they function, how they benefit the community. Our first case study is Davis Farmer Market in California. As you can see from these pictures, the copper structure houses a large portion of vendors. They provide prepared food, fresh vegetables, and fruits. Also, they have some art shows and performance, which is a great opportunity to bringing visitors into this area. Also, Farmer Market can increase the small farms' income directly.
Because we want to add it, because we want to combine the stage shed structure and the pavilion and the Farmer Market into our Guthrie project, so accommodating visitor, looking for a peaceful escape that can have some activities in it, so we choose the Guthrie Green as the second case study, and Guthrie Green is an urban park in Tulsa, and it includes all of the things, all of the elements we want to use in the Guthrie project.
Our design concept is to build a multiple-function structure, and we designed our stage in the center, and on the both sides, you can see the farmers' market, and also we got a relevant facilities. And all of these functions are temporary, so accept the structure definitely. And, yeah, you can see that we got the restroom and the storage on the right side of the And the dash line on the bottom of our picture is our pavilion or structure. It is 40 by 110 feet, and we had 32 stalls underneath that, and all of them are movable and flexible. And probably during the other event, those stalls can be moved into the storage. And also, beside the storage room, we got a restroom for the public use. And you can see that on the plaza, what we call plaza is on the north side of our pavilion. And our grid form is aligned with our architectural column, and so that we build up our pattern. And in some of the patterns, we plant some trees, is they are architectural upright trees. And probably they will, after several years, they will grow up enough and will create a big canopy and shed for people to sit underneath that. And material-wise, we use brick edging, and which will harmonize with Guthrie's style. On this looking west section, you can see that the two columns of stalls and three pathways. And that means if visitors want to go through all the products, they have to walk four times of the length of the shed, so it's a lot of stuff is selling there. And on the right side of our drawings, you can see that our trees is planted in a box. That's what we call catchment basin. It will collect some rainwater from the upslope, and which means less irrigation cost. And if there is too much, or there's too much rainwater, there's underneath, there's underground pipe will direct the rainwater to the drainage. On this looking to northwest perspective, you can see that we designed the parking space on the south side, which is, which is used by local sailors for their vehicles, and probably that will shorten their carry distance. And in this view, it's looking west definitely, and it's, you can see the atmosphere when there's an event was coming, was going there, and we also provide some fans on the lights. In this plan view, we had, we demonstrated our audience area, which is on the north side of our pavilion, and the max occupancy is 230 seats, and they are surrounded by our architectural upright trees. And we also designed the solar panel on the rooftop of the stage, which will provide some power for the facilities. On this side section, it's looking to west, and you can see that all the folding chairs can fit in the audience area, and probably the first five or six rows can be classified as VIP seating, because they are underneath the rooftop. And also, we demonstrated our sustainable thinking in that drawings. We had our rainwater harvesting system, which means it collects the rainwater from the rooftop and store them in the system and use it for the irrigation or restroom. It's a night view perspective. You can just imagine that your favorite band player was playing their music there, and we got powerful stereo and fantastic lighting, and everything you need, just that structure.
This is a perspective view looking south. The choice of the vegetation established some symbiosis connection between the urban street and pavilion. The vegetation can soften the grade line and pavement on the floor. Also, the pattern of these branches are upright and random, which can provide an open shade for people and won't block people's view.
This is the sustainable facility. The sustainable facility is a new trend, a new trend of modern urban garden design. Recycling is becoming more common today, and so in our design, on the left, you can see the underground rain catchment basin, and we will use several different kind of materials in order to keep this temperature low and preserve water. And on the roof, we also added some slope in order to make the rainwater flow along the roof edge, and we can easily collect the water into the system, and we added eight solar panels on the roof so we can meet the power requirement in the Harrison Square. That's all. Thanks.
All right.
And then we'll take questions. We don't have to take questions. We can just, if you want to tell them. We have something for you.
All right. Whereas the students of the University of Oklahoma's College of Architecture, Departments of Regional and City Planning and Landscape Architecture, led by John C. Harris, Ph.D., and Thomas N. Woodfin, Ph.D., provided valuable volunteer support during the Gentleman of the Road Music Tour and Downtown Arts Festival, conducted surveys, and performed other research on the infrastructure and environment of the City of Guthrie, compiled information to complete a thorough design analysis, and recommendations based on concepts and needs, outlined in comprehensive plans for the City of Guthrie, and developed, presented, and provided schematic drawings for developing unique and traffic-attractive locations in the downtown central business district of Guthrie. Whereas these volunteer efforts by the students and staff of the University of Oklahoma's College of Architecture, Department of Regional and City Planning supports the City of Guthrie's 2014 goals to accommodate long-term infrastructure, create sustained diversity of recreational, educational, and cultural opportunities, and enrich the lives of our citizens and visitors, and create and enhance the value of the local economy through progressive business development initiatives. Therefore, being resolved that I, Mark Spradlin, Mayor of Guthrie, Oklahoma, do hereby offer on behalf of the City of Guthrie our sincere gratitude and appreciation to the following individuals for their extensive work and creative talents provided to the University of Oklahoma's College of Architecture. Now, if I could have some help here for Dr. Woodfin, if you would introduce your staff, please, all of your students, I would appreciate it.
And let him know.
And if you would please stand as your name is called. Jennifer Thomas. Justin Henry. Megan Underwood. Trey Ingram. Connor Cummings. Bryce Frost. Ink Lee. Lake Wolf. Chi Xiao. Portia Owens. Mary Shahidi Anwar. Patrick Glasson. Peng Kao. Peng Kai. Zhang Long Kong. Yu Yu Lu. Zhang Li. There we go. John Harris.
Now, for all that we just read, there is a certificate. We hope y'all will display that wherever y'all keep your stuff.
Your desk, John. Your desk.
We appreciate it.
I still want my t-shirt you owe me.
Yeah, this is one of the official ones, yes. It's signed by somebody.
All the others were stolen.
Yeah, you might have to take turns signing them, so.
Somebody stole all of them.
Again, the city wants to thank every one of you. That is a great job. We appreciate this, you gave us, given us some great ideas, and I think we're gonna go with some of it. I really like it. Y'all have done wonderful.
Thank you very much. It was a great pleasure to work with all of you. We appreciate your vision, and it's inspiring for the students to get to work with a group like you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I want to let you know that my youngest son actually received a double Masters in Landscape Architecture and Urban Planning in this program, and the most beautiful thing is, he walked out of college and he was employable, so. So, thank you, Tom. I appreciate it.
All right, we will continue with the rest of the city council meeting in a moment. We will be going into executive session, so when we do that, at that point, you're more than free to get up and leave if you'll bear with us for a few minutes. We'll continue on. Item number four.
I want to, possible action. On your agenda is discussion and possible action on the presentation. The possible action, as you'll see in your agenda summary, what I am asking, and I want to be very clear to the citizens and to this council, these are merely the infant stages of a possible idea. What you approved in your budget for 2014 were downtown improvements itemized from the sales tax revenue from Gentleman of the Road concert. We won't know our sales tax revenue for the Gentleman of the Road until November 10th. In the meantime, I'm asking counsel that we
Somebody stole all of them.
Again, the city wants to thank every one of you. That is a great job. We appreciate you, James, for giving us some great ideas, and I think we're going to go with some of it. I really like it. Y'all have done wonderful.
Thank you very much. It was a great pleasure to work with all of you. We appreciate your vision, and it's inspiring for the students to get to work with a group like you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I want to let you know that my youngest son actually received a double master's in landscape architecture and urban planning in this program. And the most beautiful thing is, he walked out of college and he was employable, so. So, thank you, Tom. I appreciate it.
All right. We will continue with the rest of the city council meeting. In a moment, we will be going into executive session, so when we do that, at that point, you're more than free to get up and leave if you'll bear with us for a few minutes. We'll continue on. Item number four.
On your agenda is discussion and possible action on the presentation. The possible action, as you'll see in your agenda summary, what I am asking, and I want to be very clear to the citizens and to this council, these are merely the infant stages of a possible idea. What you approved in your budget for 2014 were downtown improvements, itemized from the sales tax revenue from Gentleman of the Road concert. We won't know our sales tax revenue for the Gentleman of the Road until November 10th. In the meantime, I'm asking council that we develop a steering committee made up of members of our community to help us guide us into those downtown improvements. I will ask that that steering committee must contain at least a few different individuals, but especially the chamber. What's critical here is that this is a tourism piece, and that the CBB must have a great say in the design and the ideas behind what we may do. So, what I'm asking council is that if you'll allow me to have a steering committee, and what that means is that we'll meet, y'all give me the names of who you want on there, just some ideas off the top of our head. I know that I've mentioned it to both Scott Haas and James Long, Justin Fortney, the Pollard, the Chamber, entrepreneurs, landscape architects, historical preservation committee, a member from there, somebody from the bed and breakfast community, just to name a few. So, we want to get that public input from our people that definitely know the shrinks of our community and can help us guide it to some downtown improvements, and then that that committee comes and makes a recommendation to the city council on how to proceed. If it's the will of the council for us to gather that public input, I would love to be granted the authority to direct a steering committee to give you a recommendation.
So moved. Second. Council, cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in?
Show us the votes, please. City manager, you have permission from the council to establish a steering committee to build us a place.
Thank you.
All right.
And I want a splash pad. Sorry.
All right. Splash pad, farmer's market, everything. We want it all.
Concert.
All right. Item number four. Discussion and possible action on the mayor's appointment of Ben Coffin to the Guthrie Parks Board.
So moved.
Hold on.
What?
All right. Go for it.
What?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in?
Show us the votes, please. And it is unanimous. Thank you. I forgot about that. Sorry, Mary. I forgot about that. All right. Item number five, city managers' report.
It is Fire Prevention Month. Our firefighters have done over 10 presentations and tours to our local community/schools in the past month, so make sure that you thank a firefighter when you see them and prepare your home for that. I will be out October 24th through 25th in the very far destination of Edmond, Oklahoma, for the City Managers Association, two-day conference. I will not be spending the night there, though some, anyways, I will be coming back and forth to Edmond. The armory is almost complete with its abatement. There has been some interest in what we're going to do with that armory. I have been kicked out of the armory. Apparently, you can't go in there without protective gear, and I missed that memo and am not allowed back in for the next two weeks. I want to congratulate, somebody else take that for me, but the Carl Albert win on Friday night was fantastic. I was in another city on Sunday and just got approached about our great football team. I won't say anything coming from Texas about the OU-Texas game. I'll be quiet. Some successful things that we had happen this weekend. We have Justin Fortney here that led the Moonlight Madness Bike Ride, and if you have not seen that, it is fantastic. You dress up in a costume and you ride around town, and they ended up at Hoboken watching E.T., thanks to Officer Gibbs for supplying a screen. And if you wanted to ride your bike wearing an E.T. costume and go watch E.T., that's how we roll here. I also want to thank those merchants for a successful block party. It was a third block party put on by Prairie Gothic. Once again, some really exciting, inviting things going on in Guthrie, and I'm happy to be a part of it. That's all I have.
That's it. Item number six, requests and comments from members of the city council. Z, we'll start with you.
I don't have a lot, but I appreciate the presentation you all gave this evening. I know you put a lot of time into it, and it's obvious, and I believe it's going to be helpful to our city, so very much thanks for all you did for that for us. And we got a lot of stuff going on in town. It's pretty exciting to see the growth and changes that are going on with the bike rides and the weirdness. That's all I have.
Mary.
Well, I do want to thank everyone for all the time that you spent, and I know it took a lot of time and a lot of hard work, so we do appreciate it very much. I'll tell you about all the things that are going on in town. We have got the Pollard Theater that's showing altar boys until the end of the month. We have the Street Kings. They're going to do a free movie out at the Beacon Drive Inn Saturday at dusk. They're going to grill. Everybody's invited to that. Guthrie-Hunt Scare Grounds is going on every Friday and Saturday, and he called our office today and told Lucy they had like 300 cars lining up on Highway 77 to get in Saturday. So, that's going like gangbusters. They're doing great over there. He doesn't, he has a real small parking lot, too, so it's pretty challenging for him over the weekend, but that will go on until the end of the month. Now, on 31st, all of our merchants will supply candy for all the trick-or-treaters. That will begin at 4 o'clock and will go till 6:00. So, pass the word, everyone. And I think that's it, pretty much, for the end of the month.
That's it?
Yeah. Not too much, but enough.
John.
All right. I want to thank you guys for coming. I was really impressed, and I was surprised how quickly the turnaround was, because you guys were here, what, a month ago, collecting data and doing a lot of this stuff, so really impressed with how fast that was.
You have to keep up with Guthrie.
Yeah. We're a fast-paced community, I tell you. I just want to take a second really quick also to talk about the Lunch on Noble. It's a program here in Guthrie. It's been around for 10 years. It's actually served about 6,500 meals in the last year. Visitors can receive a hot lunch five days a week, and it's going to be even more important as it gets very cold this winter for that type of stuff. It's supported by the Guthrie Ministerial Alliance and hosted by the Trinity Episcopal Church, and the program is really on heart times right now, so they're asking for donations, so I hope you can find a heart to do some donating for that. If you donate, it's at Trinity Episcopal Church at 310 East Noble. The second thing is the library. Guthrie Library has a thing called Book Talks. It's a book talk series. Writing Worlds is what it's called, and the next one is on October 28th, and it's called Everything That Rises Must Converge by Flannery O'Connor, and led by, a talk led by Dr. Carol Humphrey. It's free. It's a free event, so I hope you come check it out. Thanks.
Randall. Oh, never mind. I'm not elected.
Cheryl.
I want to thank each one of you for all the hard work that you put in on the project, and believe me, I didn't go to college till late, so I understand the hard work that you've put in. Thank you very much.
Jeff.
I'll just do what everybody else has said. Thanks, guys. Really appreciate what you've done.
Great.
Yeah, as much as it pains me as an Oklahoma State University and Oklahoma City University student, but in all jokingness, you know, as you guys did this project as a grade to some degree, you've really put inspiration into a city. I think it's important that you guys get to realize that there's more to it, and I know as you worked hard and labored over it, but for us, it's such welcoming information. So, thank you sincerely, because this is a great direction. It'll keep us motivated, and it's wonderful ideas. Thank you.
And one more time, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. We appreciate everything you did. It's really great. All right. Item number seven, consider approval to convene into executive session pursuant to the authority of Title 25 OS 2001 as follows. Items A and B. Council, I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Council, cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in?
Show us the votes. It is unanimous. We're in executive session. Folks, we're going to be there for a while. You're free to leave. We thank you very much.